Good evening and welcome to this council's cable cast post agenda on hospital workers in the city of Pittsburgh. This evening, we are fortunate to be joined by several council colleagues, including Councilman Bruce Kraus, Councilman Bobby Wilson, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, and we might be joined by others as the as the post agenda proceeds. So I really want to thank everyone who's here this evening to discuss and to to hear from some people on this very important topic. And I have to say that this is an issue that I think a lot of people have been hearing about in some form or fashion for a while now, but it certainly has come to the forefront throughout 2020 and 2021. I mean, when we think about it, hospital workers are no doubt among those who we have deemed heroes throughout this past year, especially as we've been faced with the COVID pandemic. And it's no doubt, there's no doubt in anyone's mind that this is truly an equity issue because you know, those who work in our hospitals, who are caring for the sick and their caretakers, making sure that they're fed, making sure that the space is kept clean, making sure that everyone is healthy and getting better. While we, while many of us have the luxury and the privilege of working from home, myself included, these workers have been on our front lines. They've been risking their lives and their health every day. And we also know that folks who work in hospitals are disproportionately black and brown and female. And for this, this is because of this, this is an equity issue. We have, as we know, in the city, our comeback 20 years ago was in large part because of our ads and meds, as we know, or as we often like to say. And these are some of the largest employers in the city of Pittsburgh. And because of that, we know we want to make sure that our largest employers, whether they're these large nonprofits or whether they're large businesses, are being the best corporate citizens that they can possibly be, being the best, not just in the language that they use and diversity and inclusion programs that they have, but making sure that there's a culture that runs through the entire system from top to bottom and in the middle that is inclusive and fosters a sense of belong, a real belonging, and allows people to look forward to going to work every day and feel as if their vocation is making a difference and that they're feeling protected when things aren't going so well. So I'm looking forward to this discussion because we are going to hear from some workers themselves about their own experiences, for better or for worse. We're going to hear from some people who are attorneys and have some really creative ideas around ways that the city can improve what we are currently doing to work with as partners or to enforce policies to improve upon what we're seeing in our hospitals. And I want to say that we're, well, to answer the question, why are we focusing on hospitals? Because they're among the largest employers in the city and they are representative of, I think, a lot of different other, either of large nonprofits, as I mentioned, or larger corporations that have many, many, many workers and are large systems. And I have to also mention that we have a Commission on Human Relations. And I think we're going to hear today about ways that we can continue to improve upon the Commission on Human Relations, which is a place where any employer in the city of Pittsburgh can take their complaint about an employee in the city of Pittsburgh can take their complaint about their employer and go through a process. Well, there, there might be some ways that we can improve that. In fact, I'll strengthen my language. There certainly are ways that we can build upon the structure that we already have to further improve that. So I'm really looking forward to hearing from everyone who's here tonight and to hearing my council colleagues' questions as well. So with that, I will start by introducing Mike, Mike Brigham. And Mike, would you like to, would you like to go first?
Oh, yeah. Hi, thanks for having me this evening. My name is Mike. I'm a career cook in the city of Pittsburgh. I've been out here since 2014. And when COVID hit, my job unfortunately closed and never reopened. So I picked up a job on the tray line at UPMC Presbyterian. And there are a lot of people like me, like especially in my department. And at first we were excited, but it didn't, it didn't take long for that to wear off, especially for me as a trans man, because I was excited to work for an employer that fully covers the medical transition. But when I got there, they, they, they forced me into a uniform that does not, that's, that doesn't match my gender. And I was told that I would have to validate my existence myself to my coworkers, that my managers would not advise them to use my name and pronouns, that it would be all on me to give up my lunch break or stay or stay late to attempt to explain and validate my existence to the people I worked with at this company that boasts being respectful, having diversity and being inclusive. And they even have a PowerPoint that includes a slide on how to, on how to not misgender patients. And that's great, but where's the training on not misgendering workers? Like, we do have to go through a handful of training PowerPoints ourselves, but they didn't include anything like that for us. There are people currently working at Presby who are afraid to come out of the closet because of, they don't feel accepted, they don't feel safe. I even had a friend that had an interview and heard my story and sort of straight up canceled it for there. And it doesn't matter how well you do your job if you're in, if the employees and supervisors don't respect you for who you are. So that's why I just, I hid in the closet as much as I could until I hit my six months there. And yeah, I've never like really been explicitly out at any job, but I've been in much more accepting environments. There was even a chef that I worked with downtown that was really mean, but he did not tolerate any sort of racism or bigotry in his kitchen. So I stayed there for two years. And it's a super easy thing to call people by their names and pronouns. UPMC talks about acceptance and insurance closely covers transitioning, but it's, it's lip service. When I saw, care to begin my transition, I found out that it's, it was really hard to navigate their system and find the healthcare that I needed, especially a trans competent gynecologist. And I just, I went to Planned Parenthood and once I got first the prescription from, from them, it took about five weeks for them to approve my testosterone. And what sucks is UPMC has a, for, per policy, you have to hang out where you're hired for at least six months before you can transfer and you have to be like the perfect employee. So as soon, I was, I was fortunate enough to be able to find a position that I'm in now. I work in central food production at the Shady Side location. And like even a week before I decided, I decided to take the leap of faith. Like even in the interview, I was nervous because I didn't want to risk them thinking, them not accepting trans people on me getting the job or not. But after I did, I texted my chef there and he reached out to the diversity and inclusion team, got my name changed, my badge, got my name changed when I log into my info net. And he asked me some questions, just like basic questions and made sure I was gonna be comfortable. He, he talked to the staff himself and set the bar there like, and told them my name and my pronouns and, and he was totally prepared to help defend me. And it's been great here over the past couple of months. So it's, it's strange, like it's a large corporation and not all of the, not all of them are equal in the way they treat people. And everybody anywhere across UPMC should be able to be out and have the same amount of support as I do, but they don't. And you know, not everybody can transfer, not, not everybody finds the opportunities. Or, yeah, but it's the cities, UPMC is the city's largest employer and biggest landowner, and they need to be held accountable for their treatment of workers at all of their locations. And all of them need to reflect the values that they boast about, but they don't, especially not at their Presbyterian campus. Thank you for listening to my story. That, that's, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. I really appreciate you sharing your story. Um, next up we have Gideon.
Hello.
Hi, Gideon.
Hi, I have to say thank you first for hosting. This is like really scary to do, but I think that this definitely is, there's so many people who aren't here who are having the same experiences as us. And so to be able to speak here for the people that I work with, who I know are directly impacted by this every single day is really awesome. So I have to say thank you.
Thank you for being here.
So first thing, just like Mike, I work at Presbyterian Starbucks. We're at Presbyterian, but I read the Starbucks at Presby. Coffee is a huge part of my life. I worked at 13 corporate stores in Pittsburgh. And I've gotten to know a lot of different people in every community that I've been in. I lost my job throughout the pandemic, like a lot of people, a lot of food service workers. And UPMC was a good foot in the door for me to get back, back enrolling. Every day I get to talk with doctors and nurses and connect with them. And throughout that, I've been able to connect with people about queer issues, specifically in terms of like healthcare, access to healthcare, quality care. So it's, it's been really awesome to connect coffee and my experience as a queer person with other like healthcare people and kind of hear about their experiences as even employees working in healthcare and being treated, I think, in a really horrible way. So I also, I'm from Salt Lake City, Utah. I grew up in a place where being queer was never okay. I was very used to that. And so being comfortable in a place where I feel safe is really important to me now, including my workplace. We're, a lot of us, this is where we spend most of our time outside of our house. Almost all of our time, actually. So, but I'm here today because recently my partner had, and I had to make a trip to UPMC emergency room, which is only several hundred feet from where I work. And my partner was injured and I was deeply concerned about his health and his survival. And the experience that we had in the emergency room really, really shook me to my core. We experienced, I watched my partner experience like really racist care. To, it was, it was just kind of terrifying. I think if I had been sitting in that bed, it would have been completely different. The questions that they had asked him would be completely different. We know that there are people who have gone to the emergency room and have either been misdiagnosed or mistreated or their care has been lackluster because of the way that they are presented or people perceive them. And it's life or death for them. And I'm grateful my partner is, is doing okay now. But instead of feeling like we were safe there in this place where I bring people together down the hall to serve them coffee and keep them going, I was made to feel othered with my partner, having to constantly explain our relationship and worry about his treatment as a brown person and wondering if our greenness or race would keep him from getting the care that he needed. So in short, I experienced queer phobia in food service on a daily from people making comments. I kind of shrugged that off, but to come and experience it as a client was just really, really kind of terrifying, was just really scary, especially in a moment of emergency. Some of the people that helped us know that I work there. So there were people that were literally acknowledging that they know that I, I work with them. They see me in at Starbucks in there a lot. So they, but so these are people that like know me, they know where I work, they know that I work there, but still just didn't really know how to navigate that space with me and my partner. And it just really impacted the whole experience. So I guess, I just want to say we deserve to be seen and heard, especially in our workplace and especially while receiving emergency care or just general care, because I work in a healthcare environment. This, this discrimination impacts our overall health and wellbeing. I know people, like Mike said, you have to have kind of like a really good record to transfer out of a place. And if you're not really feeling safe in that place, why, why would you want to go to work? Why would you want to, I would call off. I wouldn't feel very comfortable or safe if the people that I work with are making me feel not, not, not really seeing my humanity. So I know that UPMC receives awards for their policies on paper, but those policies aren't actually helping the people who work here and the patients that we care for. Ask them, ask the people that work there, ask the queer people. I, I know all of the people that I know who are queer, dozens, dozens of people, none of them feel comfortable, none of them feel safe. None of them feel like UPMC is living up to their values and standards. My trans coworkers struggle from keeping to be dead, being dead named at work or misgendered, having to use stickers to cover their names on their badges because UPMC doesn't, I think that they've recently, recently changed this, allow them to use their bad name on their badge unless it's a legal name. And if so, they have to go through a process to appeal that. I, like I said, I worked at corporate Starbucks. I think that there's definitely a lot of work to be done in terms of cultural competency. There's never any level off. It's, it's always something that needs to be done. But Starbucks, corporate Starbucks, in my experience, did a great job of making people, queer people especially, feel comfortable and safe at work. I know it's possible. I know it can be done. So UPMC is supposed to be mandating some sort of cultural competency training in the next, they're rolling it out actually at this moment for all of their, their managers, but it simply isn't enough. You can't learn about a person's humanity by sitting in front of a computer and reading a pamphlet. You can't make people feel or understand the experiences that queer people face in work or, or that it's not just respecting us, but it's seeing our humanity at the end of the day. I know the city has passed legislation that is supposed to protect workers like me from discrimination at work. We need some sort of real mechanism in place to hold employers accountable so that we can actually protect people from harm. I do not feel like UPMC has lived into their missions and values. And I believe that the current systems that are in place are not actually working to support queer or trans workers at UPMC. Thank you.
Thank you, Gideon.
Thank you, Gideon. I appreciate your words and I appreciate your story and for you being here tonight. So next up we have Sam. Hi, Sam Tillman.
Yeah. Um, so like Gideon and Mike said first, thank you, Councilmember Strassberger, for having us here, for having this supposed agenda hearing, for giving us the opportunity to talk about UPMC and what we as workers are going through there. My pronouns are they/them. I am a milli therapist at Western Psych. I've been working there for about three and a half years. For those of you who might not know, as a milli therapist, I'm responsible for direct patient care. We're probably with the patients more than any other physician in the hospital. From everything, from making sure they have therapeutic groups to making sure they're safe. If there is a crisis, whether medical or psychiatric in the hospital, we are probably going to be the first people there on the scene. Because it's a very tough job, there is a lot of burnout even before the pandemic. Understandably, working with people who have psychiatric disturbances, we do face assaults, attacks, physical injuries. I know that I personally have been called just about every slur that can be used against someone by patients. And that's, that's kind of part of why we have to do what we do. We all love our job. But UPMC hasn't taken care of us, even though we do love our job and taking care of our patients. They have substandard pay. We are frequently pulled to other units where we don't know the patient population or the staff or what might have been happening that day. We are frequently left alone with patients who can be aggressive or dangerous. And when an incident does occur, frequently management will blame us. This is all to say that like, I think like Gideon said, theoretically, there are mechanisms in place to address things. Theoretically, we have HR, we have mechanisms that if we are having difficulties with management or work, we can go to, but in practice, that doesn't work out. So I kind of have a little example of how that plays out. My coworkers and I, over the course of the pandemic, have been working together to address concerns with PPE, with staffing, with, with staff safety and patient safety, with the fact that myself and my coworkers have been harassed based and discriminated against based on our race, gender, identity, sexual orientation and expression. And to address these issues, we got together and heard that the nurses who are unionized were having a meeting in March to talk about these issues. And we decided that it would be a good idea to express these issues at the same time. Went to HR the day that they had their meeting. And we were all excited. We were able to meet with them. And we were informed that we would be able to have a, our own meeting to address these concerns the next week. But then, a day later, literally, this meeting was suddenly canceled and we were not given an opportunity to discuss these concerns. But I personally, and I believe some other staff members as well, were pulled out of our unit during our regular shifts without warning, one-on-one to quote unquote, "talk about these things." We were not informed why anyone had canceled these meetings. We were not given another date. And we honestly feel a lot like that. There is a lot of retaliation against us for expressing our concerns. So because of this, we tried to go back, but we still have not had our concerns met or addressed by HR. Continue als, in the meantime, continuous cases of abuse and harassment keep coming up. Like I, like I said, the nurses at my hospital do have a union contract, but we, the MTs, SBAs, PCTs don't. We don't have any mechanism in place to hold UPMC accountable. Like Gideon and I believe Mike as well said, UPMC likes to claim that it is one of the highest performing hospitals in the country. It likes to boast about how it treats its employees. It likes to talk about how it fosters a culture of diversity and inclusion. But when it comes to actually respecting the diversity of its employees, the making sure that we are respected and treated with dignity has fallen utterly short. And we honestly need the city as workers of UPMC to help hold it and other employee employers accountable. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam. I really appreciate you sharing your story with us. Thanks for being here. Next we have Alex. Alex, you are up next.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you very much. I would also like to thank you. I really appreciate us having this conversation. It is very important to us as workers. So I would like to thank you for that. Um, so my name's Alexandria Cutler. You can call me Alex. It's a lot easier. My pronouns are she/her. And I have worked at UPMC, Presby and Western Psych, both. I worked in food service, so I often teetered between both hospitals. I was trained to do everything. I, I actually suggested for myself to train to know everything because I wanted to maximize my use and better help and serve the patients in the best way I can. But all that was met with was racism and resistance. So they allowed me to train in everything. And because of that, they just made me work harder. They bounced me around more. I love my job. I loved it so much. It was incredibly important to me. It was everything. The patients loved me. And you know, oftentimes you hear a lot of people saying, you know, the patients are difficult. But I've never gotten that. They're always good to me. They always love me. There would be a few hiccups along the way, but you know, that's what happens when dealing with people and it's fine. I worked very hard for my position. I, I just loved my job. I loved it a lot. It was very important and especially when dealing with mental ill patients, you had to be very precise in a lot of things that you did. You had to be on time, you know, they, they clock your time, make sure you're on time. And you know, because they wouldn't believe you, they wouldn't feel like the food's safe if you were early or if you were late. You know, you just, you had to make sure everything was right. So it was very important to me to be to the T as perfect as I possibly could. You know, I had to talk to patients and often that included, you know, talking them down from dangerous situations. And that was with no training. It would be just me in the room a lot of the time. Sometimes they would have another staff member in the room. But there were times where I was hit with food trays, where I was called names and threatened. And each time I would go to management and say, hey, I need help. This isn't working. Something's happening and I don't feel safe. And they will often be like, it's okay, I'll deal with it and never deal with it. So that's actually what led up to me getting my face beat with quite a few food trays. Um, they don't take me very seriously. They didn't take a lot of their black employees seriously. I have been called, I've been called inwards and, and by white coworkers, they've said it jokingly around me. And when I wrote statements and told my supervisors about it, they came to me and was like, whoa, take this out of the statement. Write it like this, this, and I'll explain to them, that's not fair. This is my story. This is what happened. They don't want to hear it. And there's always touching me without permission. They touch my hair. You know, the, wow, it's so fluffy. It's so soft. It's so poofy. These are words they use to describe it. And when I would ask, I'm like, hey, can you please not do that? It makes me really uncomfortable. Then I became this intimidating person to them. They said that I was being intimidating and I was so aggressive. I have gotten put into meetings, surprise meetings, where I weren't allowed to have someone there to help me feel a little bit more comfortable. We would have a meeting with my manager, the director and human resources. And right after they would get done laughing and talking to each other, they're like, okay, you can come in now. Pull me into the room. They're like, why would you do this? Why would you say this? You know, we're here for you. We're here to help you and you're not working with us. Now explain to them the issues that I'm having, you know, dumb, all these, all these things, you know, especially when a supervisor had made a comment before saying, you people don't know how to work hard. We're referring to at the time, an all-black set of employees that was working that night. And so when I tried to explain to them how hurtful this was, they didn't want to hear any of it. They're just saying, I'm belligerent, I'm aggressive and I'm intimidating. And they sent me to dignity and respect training. I had to talk to a counselor and it would be, I believe, for like six weeks. But when I went to the counselor, the counselor was like, there is no reason whatsoever you should be here. There's none and you just shouldn't even, this shouldn't have even come up. So he told me to just go to, go back to work and he would reach out to my human resources, the person at the time, and explain to them that I don't need to be there, that he's not accepting me. So once he handled that, I was finally done with that, but I was still walking on eggshells, so to speak, every day. I would be trying my best to make sure there's no reason that they would have to come to me about anything. But for some reason, it was always an issue, you know, especially, especially with my hair. I could not catch a break when it came to my hair. And it goes and show a lot how they are always saying that there's advancement opportunities within UPMC. But so far, there has not been any black advancement. And it shows. There has, ever since I've been working there, there's only been two black supervisors. And for each set of supervisors, there's at least four. So out of the whole three years that I've been, there's only been two black supervisors and they both quit because the environment was toxic. Before they left, one of them in fact was a student. He said that he couldn't take off of work because he had school, he had something important for school that he had to go to. And they would not allow him this day off of work. But they allowed the white supervisor to take off, to go to, to go on vacation to some other country whenever he needed. And it wasn't fair. And he said that it was constantly tension and so much ignorance. And he felt strongly that it was a race problem. So he decided to leave and so did the other female black supervisor. So I feel like black people should be treated way better in UPMC. It's almost like it's not a professional environment at all. It's like you're outside on the street and, and a horrible place. It's almost like it's not a professional environment at all. It's like you're outside on the street and, and a horrible place, not at a workplace. I feel like black people should be treated way better at UPMC and I really do hope that one day there is a change. I'm sorry, that's my, that's my story.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you for sharing your story and thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Sue Fritchy. Sue, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, can you hear me?
You can, Sue.
Okay, good.
Um, so um, I'm a staff attorney at the Women's Law Project. And that is a Pennsylvania-based nonprofit legal advocacy organization. Uh, I run our Pittsburgh office. We also have a Philadelphia office. And what we do is we offer free legal services, legal advice and in appropriate cases, legal representation. On a whole range of women's rights issues and LGBT rights issues. So I do work in the field of sexual harassment, pregnancy discrimination, pregnancy accommodations, nursing accommodations. Um, LGBT discrimination. A lot of what we see is intersectional discrimination. It's really rare for someone to be harassed. Only along one axi- axis. So they are subjected to sex, sexual harassment, but also racial harassment. Also harassment based on gender or sexual orientation. So um, I'm not in a position tonight to comment on any particular case or any particular employer. Um, but I'm so grateful for the chance to address sort of the shortcomings in our legal system when it comes to dealing with employment. Um, discrimination of the type that has just been described. So thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, so much and to the other members of council. And um, thank you, Mike, Gideon, Sam and Alex for relaying your stories. Um, it's, it takes courage to do that and I respect it enormously. So why do we still have race and sex and sexual orientation and gender discrimination? When we have laws that prohibit it and the legal system, the purpose of which is to enforce those laws? So um, I, I, you know, I'm not a social scientist, but what I've seen in my own work is that there are. Pretty serious barriers, many of them, and if we want to change the reality that we have today. Um, the approach, I think, has to be multifaceted, addressing many, many barriers. Um, so first, our laws are weak. They're surprisingly weak. Um, they don't apply to everyone. There are limits on employer size. So if you work for a very small employer, not an issue when we're talking about hospitals, but um, the law might not even apply to you. Most anti-discrimination laws are comparative. So what you do is you look at how you are treated and you compare it to how a person who is not in a protected classification is treated. And if people in a protected classification are treated worse than of others not in that classification. Then you have a violation of an anti-discrimination law. But that puts a burden on the worker to find the comparator, to find the other worker who's being treated better. Because many of our laws don't stop employers from being bad employers. They stop from being worse employers to some workers than to others based on these protected characteristics. But if they're awful to everyone, the laws don't reach their conduct very often. Um, the thresholds are very high for what kind of conduct will trigger protection of the law. So when we're talking about sexual harassment, a minor or episodic. Uh, instance of harassment isn't good enough to get you protection of the law. It would have to be pervasive or severe. And that means people have to suffer and suffer a lot before there's um legal recourse. Statutes of limitation are too short. Um, the conduct we're talking about is inherently traumatizing. And it is very common for it to take a long time for people to be able. To decide that they want to deal with it through the legal system or through any kind of organized response. Even when the laws are weak and even when they apply uh to a particular worker and that worker's situation. There are many reasons why the laws aren't used. Um, and one is that people don't know what their rights are. And um, there's a wonderful illustration of this. Uh, you know, I, I told you, we have two offices. We have an office in Philadelphia and an office in Pittsburgh. Um, both jurisdictions have vibrant pregnancy accommodations ordinances. And that is because of you, Councilwoman Strasburger. That was your ordinance. Um, in Philadelphia, my office has dozens of active cases where we are representing uh workers who have suffered. Uh, because uh their employer is refusing to give them simple reasonable accommodations that they need to be able to keep working during their pregnancy. We don't have those cases here. Um, I don't believe it's because all the employers in Pittsburgh are better than the employers in Philadelphia. I think it's because people are not aware that they have those rights. They don't know about the ordinance. We know that people don't know about, for example, the paid sick days ordinance. Um, in some other jurisdictions, there are whole departments whose job it is to get the word out about those rights. Specifically even about paid sick days alone. So um, you know, when we are talking about how to address these problems. Public education about the rights people do have is critically, critically important. Sometimes people don't exercise their rights because they don't trust the legal system. And there are pretty good reasons for that. Um, you know, law is a business and sometimes people in low-wage jobs might not have. A case that is valued at a high enough dollar value to be worth the while. Um, of an attorney to take that case on. So people even with very meritorious cases may have trouble getting representation. Retaliation has been present in almost every case I have ever been involved in. It is illegal to retaliate against a worker for um filing a complaint, filing a charge. And it happens all the time. It happens all the time. People get retaliated against directly by their employer. They get retaliated against by their coworkers. They get retaliated against by, you know, third parties. And the fear of that retaliation and the fear that if they speak up. They're going to get a reputation in the industry that they're in as a troublemaker suppresses all kinds of. Uh, you know, of, of uh legal action that could actually lead to some good remedies. Another source of distrust in the legal system is that, at least with many of my clients. They don't even really want money. They really don't. I mean, they'll take it, of course. Um, but many of my clients show up on our doorstep because what they want is justice. What they want is fairness. They want no one else to ever have to go through what they went through. And our legal system is much more geared towards, you know, slapping some money on the table and walking away. And um, I think it's on us as lawyers to listen very carefully to our clients. And to take them seriously when what they say is, "What I want is policy reform." Uh, and I want uh, you know, procedures in place so that this does not happen again. We need more resources. These cases are fact-sensitive and time-intensive. To develop a case takes a long time. Um, and I am sure that the Human Relations Commission would confirm that. And you know, would agree that they could do more with more resources. I'll stop there. Um, I just want to mention one more thing. People seek legal help after the harm has occurred. Uh, that's understandable, but there are some um contexts in which you can almost bet. That there is a good chance there could be trouble down the road. And I'm thinking specifically about pregnancy. So people who are pregnant um need legal consultation. From the moment that they know that they are going to want to take some time off from work. And may need some pregnancy disability and may need some reasonable accommodations. And want to know what their rights are and want to know how to talk to their boss about it upfront before the damage happens. And um, so that's why we are investigating the possibility of um. Forgive my dogs, I'm so sorry. We're investigating the possibility of starting what we're calling a legal doula service. For uh pregnant women in the Pittsburgh area where we would meet with them long before there's ever a need to bring legal action. And to try to avert that by coaching the person about their legal rights, their legal options. And developing a plan, the way a doula develops a birth plan. Um, and um, make sure that uh she is able to have a pregnancy, a healthy pregnancy and also a job. So thank you again for the opportunity to talk about um workers' rights in this forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Um, and I think that we are probably just scratching the surface on the topic of. Or on the, the number of ideas that we could employ here to actually. Improve the situation here in Pittsburgh and at the very least get it up to the standard that Philadelphia has. So, um, but I'm sure there's much more to discuss. So I look forward to the discussion with you um among, among all the others who have already spoken. Next, I'd like to invite Jennifer Raffanon Kennedy to introduce herself and say a few words.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to uh Councilwoman Strasburger for hosting this important post-agenda. To build power for workers whose rights and well-being are compromised through discrimination, harassment and denial of their human rights, particularly at UPMC. Uh, this is an important topic as UPMC is our city and state's largest employer. And human rights should be respected in all workplaces, but our largest employer set the tone. Uh, thank you to the other members of council who are here. Uh, thank you as always to Sue Fritchy who stood with uh us at Pittsburgh United and um the Women's Law Project for standing with workers time and time again. And to all of the workers here who have been so brave uh to share your stories and take their risks, um, to share what's happened to you and the people around you. Um, and uh in the hope that a human rights city like Pittsburgh uh can and must do better. Uh, creating an environment where people's humanity is respected, violations are not tolerated and violators are held accountable. Uh, again, my name is Jennifer Raffanon Kennedy. I serve as the Executive Director of Pittsburgh United. The Coalition of Labor, Faith, Community and Environmental Groups. Working to uh together to advance social, racial and economic justice in our region. Uh, one of our fundamental goals as a coalition is to increase worker power. We know that by supporting workers in their collective action, we can create greater economic equality. We also know that by ensuring workers have a voice in the workplace, that those workplaces become safer, more effective and create more benefit for our community. Pittsburgh United is living out those values by recognizing bargaining and having a contract with a staff union of our own. So even a small nonprofit makes it possible for their workers to have a voice in the workplace and to pay good wages and uh to take that seriously. Uh, but many of our region's largest employers like UPMC would rather put their resources toward union busting and stripping away their workers' right. To act collectively than pay them a fair wage or ensure that their environment is free of discrimination or harassment. Workers' power comes from being able to stick together and act together. We've heard from workers that making an individual case can be difficult. Asking your coworker who also lacks protections to be a witness for you can be challenging. The Human Relations Commission is also uh asking workers to make changes from a position of weakness, you against your boss. Asking them to make a complaint from a position of defense once something's already happened. Um, instead of a position of strength in which workers can act collectively and proactively. Uh, the Human Relations Commission should consider ways that it can support workers in not having to take these steps alone. And also engage workers in proactively creating positive work environments that befit a city that prides itself on welcoming all people and protecting human rights. While awarding settlements to workers can be helpful. What many workers seek is the cultural change in their workplace so that they can do their jobs with dignity and respect. Rather than discrimination and retaliation. Uh, as Sue mentioned, uh, what many people want is to just not have this happen to anyone else around them. It is an appropriate role for the Human Relations Commission to empower workers and stand with workers to make that change. Ensuring workers have the knowledge they need should be among the first steps. Workers must know their rights in order to exercise their rights. Workers must understand the avenues available to them to create change and be able to do it together. We as organizations and workers want to partner with the Human Relations Commission to do that. So let's think outside the box for a moment. We know that traditional engagement strategies don't always get to the people who we want to be engaged, who need it the most. Uh, because they work long hours. They can't get downtown. Um, they don't have childcare or other barriers that keep people from participating. Maybe we can do better to meet workers where they are and build on the practices they already use. What if we trained workers uh to be human rights representatives? Uh, could the Human Relations Commission train and pay representatives in the workplace who want to help their coworkers know their rights and create positive work environments? Could they be available to support workers who need to file a complaint or support the worker as a witness? Uh, or help a group of workers raise the same complaints uh that they might be afraid to talk about on their own? Uh, how can we proactively focus on making sure workplaces treat workers with dignity and respect? Rather than waiting until discrimination and harassment have already happened? Workers are also online. What if we provided online access points? Could the Human Relations Commission provide know-your-rights explainers on Instagram, Twitter, TikTok? Let's just think about something else that's not just uh an office downtown. Could there be a Yelp for workers with employer reviews that are reviewed and posted by the Human Relations Commission? Pushing employers to improve and contributing to both employer accountability and attracting employees with great work environments. Um, I think you will find workers and organizations like ours willing to partner. If you, if the Human Relations Commission can meet people where they are. So uh, the last thing I'll say is that Pittsburgh United has learned over the 15 years of campaigns that we've run to create a better, stronger and more just Pittsburgh. That good policy is never enough. A good law on the books, but without the education, implementation and enforcement options remains simply a good idea. But one that some politicians and corporations can point to in order to cover their inaction or worse, their direct harm. To those, a good idea is meant to protect. This hearing is an opportunity to expand our thinking about action and about what is possible when we take good ideas seriously. And implement and enforce them with rigor. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that also includes fully funding their implementation and enforcement. I thank you for the opportunity to lift, lift up the challenges workers face. Provide ideas and ways to partner on improving the practice of dignity and human rights for all. And move toward accountability for protecting human rights in our public and private interests. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. Madam Chair, may I just quickly? Madam Chair?
We do have uh one more speaker, but if you need to depart, then um please, by all means.
I'm going to keep it very, very brief. Jennifer, could you please email your remarks? And you had some really int- And you had some really interesting ideas that I'd like to explore further, and I can't write that fast. So if you would, and then, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind distributing those to members?
Absolutely, we'll do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Jennifer, for your remarks and your ideas. Next, we have Maria Montano to offer some remarks as well.
Councilwoman Strasburger, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak at tonight's hearing about discrimination and harassment. My name is Maria Montano, and I'm a Latina, I'm a trans woman, and I'm a labor rights activist. And my work over the past nine years with Hospital Workers Rising has given me a really unique insight into the lives and well-being of hospital workers in our city. The stories we heard today from Mike and Gideon, Sam and Alex unfortunately are all too common. Corporations, just like UPMC, they love to make plenty of room for their doctors to take a knee in the line or put out a press release saying that they value diversity, but at the same time, they actively punish black service workers who wish to wear a mask or a button that says Black Workers Matter. We see those same workers being pushed, just like Alex said, when they speak up for themselves at work, pushed to take trainings themselves because they apparently don't know how to speak to their coworkers correctly. And this June, I'm certain that they will be flying pride flags and making statements about how great it is to work there for LGBTQIA+ workers. But at the same time, they continue to deny the humanity of their trans workers by forcing them into gendered uniforms that don't fit their gender identity and expression by using their dead names on badges and work schedules and trans workers having to constantly fight to just have their basic humanity seen. And not to mention how hard it is to access the transition-related healthcare benefits that it loves to promote that they have. Councilwoman Strasburger, I was really proud to help lend my voice and to work with you on making sure that our city code protects LGBTQIA+ workers and to make sure that we can't be fired or denied a job simply for who we are or who we love. But those protections fall short of making sure that our full humanity is respected at work. Right now in this country, we're actually facing a series of threats against our rights with over 30 states actively moving anti-trans legislation. And it is important now more than ever for a city to lead and to do everything that it can to ensure that the humanity of every Pittsburgher is respected in every element of our lives. We know, and I know from talking with hospital workers over the past nine years, that this ongoing discrimination and harassment leads to serious consequences for the health and well-being of marginalized communities. Workers are being forced to choose to remain in a job that harms them or lose their only source of income, access to affirming healthcare, and the ability to support themselves and their families. And quite frankly, nobody should have to make those choices and choose between their humanity at work and the ability to continue to live in our city. Without a legal strategy that goes beyond waiting for complaints and attempting to achieve settlements, the Commission for Human Relations is really unable to protect workers who are experiencing harassment and discrimination across our city each and every day. We really need to commit, the commission needs more resources to actively check contracts against judgments. Do we even know who we do business with as a city that already has a civil rights judgment against them? Is anyone assigned to enforcement of the existing city codes? Or is it once again up to those of us who experience the discrimination every single day to carry the load of fixing our workplaces? Because quite frankly, we're tired of having to constantly stay after work late to talk to our coworkers about respecting our names and our, our sexualities and to tell them to stop touching our hair. And these are really important questions, and they deserve to be answered. And I'm really looking forward to continuing this conversation with you all. And in hearing what Jenny was saying and what Sue was saying in regards to, to some of this stuff, I, I, I'm really interested in some of these more creative ways that we might be able to help queer and trans folks access their rights about how they're protected at work. Could we be partnering with partners who use, who supply transition-related healthcare in the city? Like we know Prasad, we know some UPMC doctors, we know Planned Parenthood, we know Metro Community Health. If somebody's coming in to access transition-related services for the first time, should we be helping those, those community centers provide information about how to protect yourself at work when you come out and you need to stand up to change your name or to request time offer for transition-related surgeries? I think there's a lot of exciting opportunities to really think differently about how workers can access their rights, protect their rights from being able to organize together without discrimination to not being treated with racism and discrimination at work. Thank you for your time tonight, and I'm really looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Maria, and thank you, everyone. I, I'm really looking forward to, well, we're just about to open it up to, to council members to ask some questions. I really just want to say that not present this evening, as I mentioned before, is our Commission on Human Relations, and they were named a lot throughout the statements, and so I want to just give credit where credit is due. Jam Hammond, Hammond, the director of the Commission on Human Relations, who was unable to be here this evening, is, he and his, his team do yeoman's work, investigating cases. You know, aiming as much as they are capable of or have a capacity to do so, to get out into the community in various ways, to educate people, to put tweets out and to be on social media. And so I think what we're hearing tonight is they need more capacity and they need to, they need more partners to help them get the word out and educate more people at the point before the point at which employees or those who could potentially face discrimination face such discrimination, to know that people are aware of their rights and are, as Jennifer said, approaching their their jobs, their, their life from a point of strength. So I did want to just say that we really appreciate the work that the commission, the commissioners and the staff at CHR that they do. So I will go in order of the council members in order of who, who kind of logged on tonight. Councilwoman Kraus, do you have any questions or any comments?
I do, just if I may quickly. First, I want to acknowledge and thank each of you for being here to participate this evening in the courage and integrity that you have shown to, to be here and to be out and to speak truth to your cause and to assist in enlightening us as members of the council in ways that we can help and assist. The questions that I have, I don't know if they're more related to Sue and her expertise in law. So maybe I'll start there. How can we adapt a more surgical approach to employers, whether that begins in their HR departments or not, to begin that education process of the standard that we have set here in the city and our expectations for employers and their adherence to to laws that we have written that protect workers? It seems to me, and I don't want to oversimplify, but this is, this is a matter of changing hearts and minds and get them to understand on larger scales the, as was spoken many times, sure, the humanity of the workforce and the importance of respecting the humanity of the workforce that they have and what an asset the workforce is to them and to view them as assets, not as, as burdens. So how can we, you know, we, we I'm not saying that we shouldn't take individual cases by any means, by any means, am I saying that? But is there, in addition to taking individual cases, a, a larger top-down kind of approach where we can get large employers to understand better their responsibilities? I, I think change happens generationally. You know, when I came out in 1972, we had a completely different viewpoint and, and image in, in our mind of what it was to be other gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgendered than we do today in 19, whatever year this is, 2021, I'm losing count. But the world has changed, and the reason the world has changed is I believe it's been generational change. It has been people that I'd like to think that we kind of began to cut a path, but we certainly didn't bring it across the goal line. It has been young people like we see represented here that are standing up and saying, this is not a world we're going to live in any longer. We will, we will make the changes that need to, to be made. I never thought in, in, in my wildest dreams that I would have the legal right under the state sanction to marry another man in my lifetime, and yet it did happen. And it happened because of generational change and young people leading the charge and saying, this is not the world we're going to live in. So the, the, the power of youth, the power of new ideas, new ways of thinking, just like it is important to get young people elected to public office. I believe it's important to get young people, we look at people like Sam and Gideon and Alex and Mike and in positions of authority within corporations that will make that kind of substantive change that needs to be made. Because there, there won't be, we won't be met with the kind of resistance that we are being met with by someone in a, in an older generation, if you will, that doesn't see the world through the lens that people like Sam and Gideon and Alex and Mike see the world. So a very long way of saying, there, there's, there's got to be a way to infiltrate the corporation in a very surgical and precise way to say, this is not how we do business here, this is not how the world does business, and you need to change with the times, and we're here to help you to change. Is that possible?
Well, yeah, it better be. And I think that what council is doing tonight is part of that. So shining a light upon practices that are not legal, that are not acceptable, that should not be happening in any business and certainly not in any business that the city does business with. That will certainly help. I think it's important to think about the experience of the worker who is being subjected to discriminatory conduct or harassing conduct and not leave that person alone, not leave that person on their own to try to find an advocate, to try to find a witness, to try to find someone who might be able to stand with them. That is what we need to do.
Councilwoman Strasburger may also throw out an idea?
Yeah, please, Jennifer, please. I'd love to hear it.
Well, I totally agree that what Sue was getting at is the city's power of procurement is a main way that it can exercise its values, of course. And I'll preface this by saying I'm not a lawyer, but I did talk to another employment lawyer. And one suggestion that came up was for the Human Relations Commission to be able to have missionaries charges similar to what the EEOC has so that multiple workers could come together and an employer could be investigated like a more serious charge than might come with an individual complaint. So that's also a way to potentially target an employer that has multiple complaints or bring them together in a way that the commission is, is able to really take that on and move it forward investigating the employer.
The council over the years has passed a number of ordinances that relate to to contracting and who, who we choose to do business with and the standards that we wish to see in, you know, before we sign off on procurement with an individual worker. Somebody else has a cat, Gideon and I have a cat too. That's okay, I got one too. But you know, Councilwoman Gross and Strasburger, I think you're better at this than what I am. Within the, the procurement requirement legislations that we have passed on in council, have, have we ever included a clause or an intent that we need to see certain practices in, within HR as how they relate to their employees in terms of, of not limited solely to gender identity expression and sexual orientation, but to to the higher standard that we heard spoken about tonight by so many people. Have we, have we done that, or do you think there's a way?
I think maybe professional license agreements are part of procurement for the URA and city-funded construction projects. But so there's, you know, some similarity there, but not, I'm not aware of any explicit ones that talk about HR, except for that would, that would be close.
So there, there is a debarment process that includes a whole list of infractions that does include Commission on Human Relations type of discriminate, you know, discriminatory behavior that would find a find a, a business worthy of debarment, meaning they cannot then do business with the city of Pittsburgh for a period of time. And, you know, cannot get a contract. So, you know, and a violation of the Civil Rights Act and Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, that is, that is a part of that. So it is, it is there. I mean, does it come into, as pointed out before, does it come into effect, or is there someone at the EORC who is reviewing that? Or at the Commission on Human Relations who is reviewing that? Is there the enforcement in the teeth there to be able to actually do it? I think that's another question we need to get answered.
Well, I'm going to relinquish the floor. I know other members have a comment they wish to make. I may come back and ask additional questions or make additional comment, but I do want to reinforce how much respect I have for you, for your bravery and your, your dedication and your integrity to be who you are and to celebrate who you are and bring yourselves to us in your entirety to help us to advocate for you. It's been a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And for our guests, just to clarify, don't feel as if you need to be called on to, to offer your perspective. This is an open kind of Q and A at this point. So if, even if someone asks a question to a particular panelist or guest, feel free to also add to that if you have something additional to, to say. So I think the next person who joined our meeting was Councilwoman Wilson. Councilwoman Wilson, do you have any questions or thoughts to add?
Yes, and thanks for, thanks for hosting this and, and thanks for the people that have worked with you to organize this. And especially thank you to the courageous people that came on here and share their story. So I just want to, you know, say that it's always good to, to hear about the story, and I really understand the personal, you know, the personal, basically just that personal story. And, you know, within the context of what we're talking here, I recall all the videos that whenever I worked in a larger, before I was here, when I worked with a larger employer, all the videos and training videos that you sit through and they, you know, they say, you're not supposed to do this, you're not supposed to do that if that happens. And so what, and I apologize if I get your name or your, your last name wrong, Frits, Ms. Frits?
Fritchie, but I answer to anything.
Okay, sorry. Well, um, so the, you know, within that, within that context, you know, you're supposed to click through it, you're supposed to, you know, I'm sure UPMC does this where you click through it and, and you're able to pass the test. Now, are you suggesting that possibly we could improve that or the city could have a, a say in improving that, that, those trainings? Like, could we actually implement, you know, like, hey, this human relations in, in the city of Pittsburgh exists if you have a complaint? Like actually fit that in, build that into the training?
So just to sort of jump in there, right? I think one of the things that we're seeing is that the trainings that the employers are doing, they exist, but they're just not really sufficient in like, you know, protecting workers. And quite frankly, I think one of the things that we need to be, be thinking about is, yes, more, more trainings for bosses and, and managers and, and making sure that they're, you know, fully incorrect and competent to the needs being met. But it's like, for instance, if there is like a company, if we set up this, I think somebody had mentioned, I think Jenny Kennedy might have mentioned a Yelp. I think somebody had mentioned, I think Jenny Kennedy might've mentioned a Yelp for businesses, right? So it's really hard for individuals, uh, complaints through the commission to, to be seen in any sort of public fashion. And sometimes they, they can go on for months or, or years before any sort of settlement is reached between a worker and their employer. But if we had a system in place for workers to directly report an employer for violating their, their human rights at work, like that would maybe empower the commission to be like, hey, what's going on here? Maybe we need to do, uh, an investigation into this place because we've gotten, you know, 10, 15, 20 trans people at this, at this hospital saying, hey, like they're dead naming me. They're not using my, my pronouns. They're, you know, forcing me to use the wrong gendered uniforms. Like those are things that would take forever to sort of litigate into a complaint. But like, uh, I think creating newer mechanisms, uh, on top of, of the training, but also helping to connect workers to better understand their rights at points of services as well, right? So I think a lot of, of work that we could be doing and, and really work to empower the commission to do and give them the resources to do is to be able to do more direct outreach to workers at points of services that we, they're more aware of what their rights are. So that way, when they are being violated, they're, they're not just being like, oh my goodness, this really sucks that, you know, they're, they're dead naming me at work, but I don't really know how to protect myself in this instance. I don't know what to be doing. So it's like, how do we create those mechanisms in place? So it's, I think it's a, a yes, we should be making sure that there's like a base level standard for training on, uh, human rights at work and, and especially for protected classes within the city of Pittsburgh. But also how do we empower, uh, workers to have more power in this moment through being able to raise up some of these things? Cause I think Sue mentioned, it's really hard to get an individual case, uh, that actually like, uh, you know, changes in institution. And these are big, broad institutional harms that are happening to workers across the city.
Yeah, thank you for that context. I, you know, I was just thinking about a couple of systems that, you know, exist already. Like for instance, if there's, um, uh, you mentioned the, you know, the Yelp idea, but also the, the, you know, for like Allegheny County, I think there is, um, like a number and also a tech service that you can reach out if there's, uh, like abuse at the home and, you know, or, you know, at a shelter, you know, either case, there's, there's this anonymous line. This really brings up more questions than I have, just, just concerning around, you know, the, the capacity of like our human relations commission. And I mean, is, is there a hotline for the Human Relations Commission? I mean, there must be more than just an email, right?
There is a phone number and I think that you get to talk to a caseworker who can intake and sort of talk you through it regardless of whether you, um, wish to file a complaint. I'm not sure if there's a hotline or an anonymous number that you can call.
Yeah, cause I just, I'm just aware of the 24 seven service that they have, uh, with the, the county. And, um, I'm probably getting the, the title wrong, but you know, that there is some sort of abuse going on. Is that something that, I mean, is that like, if there was a more of awareness of like, if you're experiencing this discrimination, like something that's more than, um, you know, something that's more anonymous, I imagine is, is better.
I just wanted to comment on like, in terms of like facilitation, like these like PowerPoint's that they kind of like, like very recently we had met with, um, Councilwoman Strasburger to talk about like kind of what we were experiencing before this meeting. And, um, I just kind of found it really convenient that after there's been like, kind of like local conversations, um, that UPMC is like implementing this like sort of training for their managers, um, which I think is like a step in the right direction, but that also that you cannot experience the humanity or the experiences of people through clicking through a computer system, um, to kind of understand what they experience on a, on a, on a daily basis. And this is just, I guess, to make a comment on that, but that I think facilitation and maybe dialogue, conversations, acknowledging that it's happening and not just saying that this is the best place to work for queer people or, I mean, I had, I, and when I lived in Utah, I worked at an organization that facilitated dialogue with workers about sexism in the workplace. Um, and that, that's helped is acknowledging it and, and, and giving people the voice and, and safe space and opportunity to be able to do that. Now, like I said, I had worked for Starbucks, another big corporation. They also have their problems. They also struggle with making sure that they struggle with workers' rights. But one thing that they do do really good is acknowledging like those conversations need to be had, especially in healthcare, absolutely in healthcare. This, it's at the end of the day, it's people's lives. It is life or death for people in terms of care. So I get started just going on, but.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Thanks for those, thanks for that input. Cause as you're talking, I was thinking about how that, those in-person trainings or that dialogue that you could create, whether it's like small groups that, you know, are in like larger employers, uh, to require these small groups. Because even the ability to facilitate that conversation is gonna, I would imagine it would help because it would give people, um, even appropriate language to use and to understand like, you know, how to, um, you know, convey your thoughts in a, in a, in a, in a good way. And, and just to really, uh, tailor the conversation and, you know, what's appropriate and what's not. Because I think a lot of people, they want to talk about, but they're like, well, I'm afraid to say this or say that. And I think it's, it's always good to have that open conversation in, in a group. So.
If I could just add to what Gideon was saying, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Please go ahead.
Um, so Gideon, you are so, so, so correct. So the EEOC has done studies of what kind of anti harassment training works in the workplace. And what they found is that, um, while training is good, certain kinds of training actually send really the wrong message. Send a message that the employer doesn't care about, uh, you know, the, the workplace atmosphere and they're just showing you a 20 minute PowerPoint so they can check off a box. And what it actually does is it makes things worse because it communicates that your boss doesn't care about it. And it instructs harassers on how to stay just on this side of legal, right? So, um, the type of training is really important. And the more interactive and genuine it is, the more effective it will be. The more it is clearly coming from a place of concern from the very top of the organization, the more effective it will be. And it is not a panacea by any means. I mean, this whole system is, is really starving for attention and starving for sunlight and starving for resources. And just a 20 minute, you know, annual, uh, PowerPoint, that's not even close.
Yeah. And as the, the company, whether it's already a large company or if it's going to get larger, you know, they're just going to run and it's going to be, I wonder if that's mostly part of the issue is just, you know, that larger entity that is not keeping, is not making it more of like a, that family atmosphere where you can feel comfortable to open up. You know, cause there was a story, really it was Mike that said, with this, with a smaller employer, they felt more comfortable, whereas the larger one, it was, you know, very uncomfortable and probably much less accountability. So, um, so I, I'm, I'm eager to, to work further with, uh, other council members and other advocates on, on this, um, you know, on this issue and help in any way I can. So thanks for your time tonight.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, do you have any questions or, or comments?
Uh, well, I definitely want to say thank you to everyone who came tonight to share your stories with us and with the public. It's, it's, it's courageous. It is a scary thing to do and I really appreciate you having the courage to share your stories, um, to raise all of our awareness around the issues, um, to really kind of help us see into these employ, employer practices that we, we can't see on a daily basis. It's really important to be able to, to see these stories, to hear these stories through, and especially through your own voices. The, the community, the, um, Commission on Human Relations has been a topic of conversation for us lately at council. When we, um, passed an eviction moratorium for the city, it really came down to our ability or inability, um, so far to enforce it. And so we still are seeing, um, high rates of evictions because we have not put more resources into the commission. So that, that same Commission on Human Relations is there to, to help you fight for your rights at employment area in, in, you know, with employers is the same Commission on Human Relations that, um, enforces fair housing and is where we tried to put, um, a ban on evictions, to put a bar, um, to try to forestall, um, evictions during COVID, just, just during the emergency so that people could stay housed and, and be, um, sheltered at home, um, by keeping their home. Um, and, but we've been frustrated that it has not been enforced because mainly, um, we've heard testimony here at the same table that, um, the commission needs more resources. So that's really first and foremost, what's on my mind. If we're going to do, um, what we, we think we need to do, um, to address the problems that you're having with employers, I think we're going to need to be more proactive and to be more proactive. You need people and you need resources, um, to do the kinds of hotlines, to staff them, to pursue these cases, to do any kinds of these investigations. That's what I'm hearing, um, from you all. So, uh, I really appreciate you letting us know. And we do have, um, uh, another opportunity here. We were just receiving federal dollars today. So we were talking about setting up the trust fund to receive them earlier, but I, uh, was told after we were in council today that they're $165 million or so is already in process to come to the city of Pittsburgh. And, uh, so we will be revisiting our operating budget. Currently, the Commission on Human Relations, I think, is understaffed. And I think it needs more staff, um, to pursue justice for you all and, and justice on housing issues as well. So, um, that's, that's my takeaway for this evening, but I really appreciate your, your letting us and the public know about, about the, the unfairness, um, and injustice that is happening in, in workplaces in the city. And giving us the, the knowledge that we need to, to do something about it. Appreciate it.
I just sort of want to just jump in there in terms of like, when we're thinking about resources and, and the people involved in, in making these decisions, like also thinking about the resources of the people who are, uh, giving and facilitating those trainings, right? I, I think it's like, for too long, the people who are guilty of the violations are put in charge of doing the trainings themselves, right? So I think that immediately sends a really strong signal to the people whose rights are being violated that like, they're not really being listened to, right? So like, wouldn't it be great if it was black workers leading the trainings on racism at work, right? Wouldn't it be great if it was trans and non-binary folks leading the conversations about being more equitable in affirming care and your humanity at work for, for trans and non-binary workers, right? I really think that there's an opportunity here for the, like when we talked earlier about creating, uh, uh, a worker led, uh, deputization of the Human Relations Commission, right? If we have workers who are trained and developed by the Human Relations Commission, who then work in the hospitals, who, who work in the grocery stores, who work in the, the fast food stores to be able to be like, hey, I'm officially trained and I'm going to lead this training at work about racism, about transphobia, about our rights, uh, our human rights in the city of Pittsburgh. I think that in and of itself would send a really strong message to employers and shift that power imbalance that, that Sue was mentioning, uh, that Jenny was mentioning earlier about how, um, really so much is on the, the boss's side, on the employer's side. In terms of they get to control the trainings, they get control who speaks, they get to control what's on those PowerPoint slides. But if we could like flip that a little bit and adjust it so workers have a little bit more say and a little bit more power at work to run those trainings themselves because they know, uh, what the experience is on the floor and what it means to, to be able to step up and, and lead that at, at work. I think that could send a, a really strong message about how we as a city are willing, willing to do to protect workers' rights.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you. That's really exciting. It's, it's, it's so empowering just even here you describe it. That's all I have, Ms. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, um, I really just appreciate, well, first of all, thank you to the courageous people who told their stories tonight and to advocates and attorneys who are, you know, um, standing by their sides and our side as we, as we work toward equity and, um, in full, you know, allowing everyone to experience and, and exercise their full humanity as Councilman Crowe said. So thank you for being here tonight again. I'm really, I'm really enthused by this conversation about thinking outside of the box. And, you know, we think about government, you know, existing in a box and kind of, uh, doing the same thing that we've always done. And inertia just kind of carries us through. And there's, in 2021, there's been a lot of use of that term reimagining. There's a lot of reimagining happening and that's exciting to me here as well. Because, um, whether it's a deputization of a, of a worker who can then, you know, be trained by the Commission on Human Relations, or whether it is a Yelp for workers or whether it's something else, I keep coming back to this idea of, um, starting out with, I mean, to, to Councilman Wilson's point, you know, what power does the city have to control what kind of trainings are done? Well, sometimes starting out as a voluntary system and then moving to, to legislation and something that's mandated gets, gets more employer participation. I mean, I think about what we did to voluntarily ask the biggest employers in the city of Pittsburgh, within the city to report on their energy usage to try to bring down carbon emissions. And the city can only control what the city controls, like our own buildings. But when we, if we can voluntarily ask the, um, employers to report on that, it's kind of then a, you know, and that's all public. Sunshine being the best disinfectant, that's then, um, they're comparing and seeing what, how they stack up versus their competitors or vet versus other businesses. The same can be true for, um, gender wage gaps. The same could be true potentially, if, I don't know, be interested in folks' reaction here on, um, what they are doing around, um, I don't know whether it be trainings or whether it be diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging work and kind of the, the depth at which, to which they go to, to really make that a, a part of their culture. Might be challenging to quantify, but we have some really smart people in the city, um, who are doing that work and doing that work to quantify it as well. And, and, and looking at qualitative, um, work that's being done as well. So, um, I also just think that, you know, in addition to providing more resources to the commission, we have so many partners that, you know, Persab has mentioned, but we have other partners as well that if they could somehow also assist or help with the trainings or help train the trainers or help with, you know, that we have mediators without borders. We have Center for Victims that has mediators on staff. So many groups that if we could find a partnership with, that's another way of thinking outside of the box. So the onus isn't just on the worker or isn't just on the commission and the city, but it's also this whole ecosystem of organizations we're working with. So I don't know, I don't necessarily have a question. I'll just put that out there to, for any, for anyone to respond to. Maria, I see your hand up.
No, I just like that idea of, of sunshine, uh, being the best disinfectant. And you started talking about voluntarily asking them to report, employers to report back on certain things. It would be great if, if employers were reporting back things on what is the percentage makeup of, of race and gender and sexuality and, and all of our protected classes in terms of, of like the, the managerial level in the business, right? So it's like Alex had mentioned in, in her testimony that in her time at UPMC, she had only ever seen two black supervisors and both of them had quit because of the, the toxic environment. Like, is there a way to like, beginning to track the advancement of black workers in our city in terms of their ability to move up, uh, up the, the, the ladders at work and, and experience upward mobility in our city? And the, and the same for, for trans folks and for queer folks at, at large. I think if we're not actively pursuing that data from our employers in the city, then we don't really know beyond, you know, they say we've got great policies on paper, but what does it actually mean for advancement for various workers in protected classes in our, in our city? So I think that might be a good way to, to see that and it'd be great for workers too, to be able to go to the city website. They could look up the Yelp review of what it means to work at the, the. They could look up the Yelp review of what it means to work at the, the Presby Starbucks in terms of human rights violations, but also then be like, oh, by the way, there's also like a clear career path for somebody who looks like me, who has a family like mine, that there is opportunity there for advancement, and, and it'd be great if that was housed in, in someplace officially by the city.
I think just just to um, I guess double down on what Maria is saying and, and um, bring us back to some of the things I was sharing is, you know, this really has to be about empowering workers um, and people being able to take that collective action. So, you know, I think many of the things Maria was just suggesting, help us get there. Um, you know, the city has lots of studies and lots of data, but we want to be able to have workers have, see that translate into their own lives, into their own workplaces. And so that's, it's critical that their avenue is really for action and not just for, not just for information, but for workers to be able to take action and be protected. Um, and I think the other thing I would just say is like so many things in our city, we talk about, um, you know, there's a problem, um, you know, uh, an employer is doing X thing, or um, you know, an employee doesn't know their rights. The Human Relations Commission could enforce it, but they need more resources. And we're always looking to ourselves, to our tax dollars, to, to fund those things. And the, the employers need to face some accountability for not having provided the work environment that uh, is respectful of all people's uh, human rights. And so I do think there needs to be some matching of accountability and resources with correcting the problem. So I just wanted to name, name that here as well.
Yeah, understood. And um, I also just wanted to go back to something I'd said before that, starting with voluntary. I didn't actually say the second part of that, which is that in the, say, energy efficiency example, we started out with a year of voluntary reporting, and then it became law, and it was mandated for, you know, employers or buildings of a certain size. And because it had been voluntary for a year, when it was mandated, there was almost an pushback. So anyway, didn't want to say that everything has to be voluntary. I think that it can be a way to start out. Um, but, um, but Jenny, I agree that, that, that that empowering workers, it can't just be about the data collection, that's an important part. Um, but it, it can't just be about that. Empowering workers um, has to be a part of it. I guess my only last question would be, what would be if we had a, a best next step? A concrete step that we can take? What, what would that be? What would that look like from anyone's perspective?
It's a good question. Jenny, did you have an idea? So you pop off mute there for a second?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I'm happy to share uh, that, you know, my testimony as Councilman Kraus requested. And um, just offer that Pittsburgh United, of course, is willing to help in terms of the partnerships that were discussed or any other way that we can begin to move some of these ideas forward. You know, we work closely with the Human Relations Commission on Housing, as um, Councilwoman Gross mentioned. And so, you know, just wanted to offer that I think you will find that there are workers and organizations that are ready to partner on these uh, because anyone who's worked in a job where um, they face this on a daily basis. I know I've had, I've had a job like that before, and if someone had said, there's something you can do about it, like here is an avenue for that, I would, I would have jumped right on it. Um, so I would just offer that I think there are many people who are ready to to look for solutions and to try to operationalize some of these ideas.
I think you saw tonight the power of uh, four really brave workers sharing their stories and, and getting council to think a little bit um, out of the box and be thinking about the stuff. And I know in years past, uh, there was a, a Wage Review Commission that really helped along with the workers fighting for their rights, lift the wage for, for hospital service workers in Pittsburgh. Um, because of that is like, is there an opportunity here to do a broader public hearing about racism and discrimination and transphobia and queerphobia at work? Like, is there a way to, to invite more workers in our city to be in this room together to share about what their experiences are, so we can get a deeper understanding of, of just how uh, systemic these issues are in our city, because I, these are just for, for workers here. And I know in my, my time um, uh, doing work here, that I, I know that there's a lot more out there that we're not hearing from. And I, I think this is just the, the, the tip of the iceberg, so to speak, in terms of that. So maybe a good, you know, something to think about is, is how can we collect, you know, more workers' voices into this, into this process and really give workers an opportunity to, to, to speak out about what their experiences are, so we can get a sense of like, how we can impact change and, and, and see what we could be doing.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, both of those suggestions and um hearing from the Human Relations Commission directly about what they need and what they what constraints they sense on their power that they would like removed. Um, that would be really helpful to know, I think.
Those are all really helpful suggestions and something that we can discuss after this, and I'm excited to do so. I also want to name that we have a few other commissions that would be related and might be able to help volunteer some of their time towards this potentially, although they don't have the same level of staffing and capacity and charge that CHR does. And that, that's the Gender Equity Commission that um, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gross is a uh, commissioner of, and the um, pretty new, our newest commission, LGBTQIA+ Commission for the City of Pittsburgh. So uh, those are just some other ideas to bring in as well. Is there anything else that we, for the good of the record, that we have not covered yet? I'm putting my camera off because it says my, my connection is unstable. I apologize. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing everyone.
Go ahead, Mike. Feel free to jump in.
But yeah, I think uh, reaching out to a lot of our local organizations is a great way to get a hold of uh the uh, local queer population, a lot of us are pretty close knit, maybe like hit up some of the bars that we hang out at, that, that's your adult population. And one of uh, my favorite local organizations that I didn't hear mentioned was uh, Sisters, which, which they uh, they organized the People's Pride, which was just, it was much better and much more inclusive and uh, they're doing a lot of, of great work. And yeah, just reach out to our local charities, ask them what they need. There are uh, there's new names and stuff that I'm not familiar with, but yeah, there, yeah, yeah, reach out to local communities, like we're here, we're all like close knit, but the uh, the word spreads pretty fast. And, and that type, it would be great just to see more of that, because there's definitely a lot of bad experiences that happen that I hear from other workplaces, just from like talking to my friends and sharing my story. And, and it would be great to see more outreach through the avenues that we already gather under.
That's a um, suggestion really well taken. And there's always, there are always ways that we, as city council members, are seeking to reach out and hear from people, and it's like my number one struggle is how do you reach even more people and hear from even more people other than the people who are naturally going to raise their voices and, and, and reach out to you. So, yes, absolutely. All right. Well, thank you all for spending almost two hours with us discussing this really, really important topic. Um, thank you to, I'm just gonna go in the order I see them, Sue, Maria, Sam, Jennifer, Alex, Mike. And I think Gideon, and Gideon, but I don't see Gideon here. Um, thank you to my council colleagues, um, Councilman Kraus, Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Gross. Thank you to our Cable Bureau, David Finer and Alexander Fisher, who are handling two different meetings at this time, all at the same time um, by Zoom. So thank you. Thank you to our sign language interpreters for your time this, this evening as well. And um, I'm just really grateful for, for everyone um, being here this evening and telling your story and advocating for change. Since the beginning, I think of something pretty powerful and pretty big. So um, look forward to continuing the discussion, broadening it, deepening it, and, and making some pretty immediate and long-term change here. Thank you all for tuning in from home, uh, from your workplace, and um, have a great rest of the evening.